Time is six P M. We'll call this meeting to order with the pledge allegiance in a moment of silence, please. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. No alterations to the agenda since this is a special meeting. Presentations. Start with Tile Middle School, please. All right, Ms. Lomington and I are gonna call up Louis Otero Masara. Come on up here, Louis. His family's here in the front row. Um, Louis is a seventh grader at Tile who has made tremendous growth. He's so resilient. He has compassion for others. He struggled, like a lot of middle school students do, at times with the transition. There's a lot of things going on. And he's always kept an attitude of trying to help others, work with others. And he's made so much growth this year. About a month ago, we put him in our Pathways program. He's made such great strides. He's bought in. He's at school every day. And he's just a joy to be around. So his growth is something that we're all really, really proud of. Now, he is a giant WWE wrestling fan. Truth be told, I was a huge wrestling fan myself, growing up. Not anymore, but I was. And we talk wrestling now all the time. So what we decided to do was get him a Tile Championship Wrestling Belt. He is a Tile heavyweight champion, so he's gonna bring that with him and carry it around. I told him if there was a table here, I was gonna put him through the table, but... So Louis, great job. Keep up the good work and ready to go. All right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
To the Palmer Campus.
It's my pleasure to ask to introduce you guys to Nick Holt. Come on up, Nick. So this is Nick. Nick started with at the PBL and Pathways Campus his junior year, fourth quarter. And came to us, he was having some difficulty with attendance, kind of getting to school. It was a struggle for him. We became text buddies, mom, dad, and somebody else. We were texting daily, trying to get Nick to come to school. I remember a lot of texts. He'd get here by nine thirty. Gets better. There's three more periods, right? Well, I'm pleased to say he's completely turned that around. He was one of my first students to arrive. He arrives about seven, seven-ten most days, right in that range. So pretty impressive. Tenderness is really, truly not an issue for him anymore. I did ask a couple of teachers to share some comments about you. So here is what your teachers have to say. I found Nick to be a standout student, both for his own benefit as well as his role as a peer. He sets a high standard of participation in the classroom, is always personable, and wants to succeed. I'm proud to see him applying for colleges and even more proud of the growth he has shown this year alone with his commitment to his own education. He made the most of his time here at the PBL and Pathways Campus and continues to be a pleasure to work with. Pleasure to work with him. A second teacher said Nick has conducted himself this year in a manner that represents how we would want all of our seniors to carry themselves. He is humble, unassuming, and has plenty of tools for future success. Nick is smart and possesses sound academic skills. He is responsible, accountable, and dependable. Nick's level of maturity in the class that he exhibits on a daily basis sets the bar high for behavior and achievement at our school. Third teacher said Nick has shown significant growth this school year, both academically and socially. Nick is passionate about his education and is an amazing role model in the classroom. I love having Nick in my classroom and I am so proud of him earning the Montville Marvel Award. He truly deserves it. Also, a classmate is here with Nick tonight, also happens to be his girlfriend, probably a future Montville Marvel. This is what she had to say about Nick. Nick is a type of student every school deserves. He makes me want to go to school even on hard days. Having him part of our class and school community is truly something special. He is always willing to help others no matter what. The progress he has made this school year is honestly incredible. Seeing him be able to come in every single day and make the honor roll makes me and so many other people proud of him. Nick, we're really happy to introduce you as a Montville Marvel for February.
Hey, Montville High School, please. Hey. Before I call my Marvels up, I just wanted to say to Louis, that's a cool belt. Can you see the rocks back?
Yep.
The rock is back. I do watch. I know I'm supposed to watch. I still watch, okay? All right. I'm gonna take this opportunity to bring up Alex Clemmons, Rich Sorillo, and Nick Sibilia, please. All right. Montville High School is proud to recognize Rich Sorillo, Alex Clemmons, and Nick Sibilia, who have demonstrated outstanding commitment and dedication to our students and their academic needs. Their unwavering commitment has greatly enhanced the educational experience for our students. These three run our Student Support Center or our Tutor and Center here at the high school. We, when I say we, myself, Mr. Danowitz, and the rest of the staff at Montville High School, feel that this acknowledgement is long overdue. And we cannot imagine life at Montville High School without the Student Support Center and more importantly, these three in it. Rich, Alex, and Nick have formed a great team and worked tirelessly to support our students in all academic areas. Their knowledge and understanding of a wide variety of content and subject areas are remarkable. Together, like I said, they form a great team, but individually, they contribute in unique ways. Coming out of the pandemic, Rich joined us and was integral in and our credit recovery students for our students brought a couple of new credit recovery programs to the high school and created opportunities for our students to regain lost credits. He is also a tremendous support to our students and teachers as he offers push-in support into academic courses. As part of her role in the Student Support Center, Alex has taken on our Focus Study Call Program. These are students that need a little extra focus and support in their academic studies and increase and work on building supports and structure within their day. Alex also serves as a liaison between those students and the teachers and sometimes the work that they're missing. Nick is the heartbeat of that Student Support Center. He works extremely hard to support as many students as he can on a daily basis. And I'm truly amazed by the array of knowledge and empathy that Nick has for our students. When asked to describe all three, one student said they are incredibly, incredibly patient and supportive, helping me not only understand the material, but also helping me believe in myself and my abilities. One teacher in the building remarked by saying their dedication to our students is truly commendable. They go above and beyond to ensure that every student receives the support they need. We are fortunate to have such dedicated professionals on our team. For all of this, they are our Montville Marvels. Ready?
Congratulations. Now hoping you could say, Rich?
Yes.
Congratulations, Rich.
Yeah.
Appreciate you. Congratulations.
Thanks a lot. Congratulations to all the Marvels. It's the best thing I do at every single board event meeting. I say it every single meeting. All right. The next item is the presentation of superintendent's recommendations for the 2024-2025 Montville Public Schools Operating Budget.
Thank you very much. I will say, if you're in the Marvel audience and you don't want to stay for this budget presentation, my feelings won't hurt, but it's an important presentation because this is building the funding for our schools next year. Of course. Quick photo op before I go into it. I'll let you read our vision statement. I start the budget presentation each year by projecting the vision statement. We're proud of our vision. We believe it's important and compelling. It requires high-quality staff. It requires programs, facilities, and all of those things are the things that we fund with our budget. Our state funding, if you were here when Erica Haynes presented the explanation of how school finance work, she talked about the fact that some of our funds come from the state. And from the state, we have the Education Cost Sharing Grant, which is that $12,802,864 grant. That is proposed to be level funded from last year, so we would have the exact same ECS funding that we do this year. It's interesting to note, though, that for this 2024 year, there was extra excess cost funds that had been applied to our ECS funding. So it does raise that total to $12,877,000. The town has only booked $12,712,000, so there is some play with money there. The excess cost grant is a harder one for us to get a handle on exactly what that will be because it's based on students and their costs. But based on the December grant payment report, it looks like that excess cost grant would be about $699,403. The town has booked $450,000 as revenue for excess costs. Again, there's a little room for play in that area. And then the Adult Education Entitlement is a very small amount of money we get to put towards our adult education program. That's about half of what the adult education program costs. And I shouldn't say we get. All of that money goes directly to the town. The history of Board of Education funding, over the last couple of years, we've been extremely appreciative of the level of funding that the town has provided to the Board of Education. With the funds that they have provided, we have been able to move beyond just maintaining. And there was a period, you can see years ago, when we really did just barely maintain. That's when, if you were at E and E, we lost things like the CNA program because every year we had to cut to make things work. For the last couple of years, we've been able to put in some really important programs and we're very appreciative of that. I should point out that for the last two years, the appropriation from the town has been, has composed of appropriation through the taxes and also the appropriation two years ago through the town ARPA funding. And for this current year, $200,000 through the cannabis relief fund. So that was used to augment to get to our total appropriation. Our enrollment, we always take a look at when we think about funding because we look at how many students are we talking about? If there's a big difference in enrollment, increase or decrease, and obviously that would impact our funding. We haven't seen that for the last couple of years. The line in the center sort of is delineating this year and forward. And we are seeing enrollment projections to be very level. This was a professional study that we just commissioned this past year. We had to as a condition of a grant application, but it's also very helpful because they take a look with all of the information the demographers have at, you know, what they project the enrollment to be. And in fact, in actual numbers, from 2023 to 2033, they expect to see the exact same number of students 10 years from now as we have today. We'll get to it a little bit later. The students themselves, however, are different. In other words, the number of special education students is changing quite a bit while the overall enrollment stays steady. Looking at our enrollment for this year, just so you can get an idea, we have 1,934 students in our K-12 program. Another 205 students in programs that we pay for, whether they're the PK or Transition Program that are at bookend our K-12 program, whether they're tuitions at magnet schools or the Ledgerd VoX School or other choice schools, we pay for those students' tuitions. We do not pay for the technical school students' tuitions. The only district responsibility for them is transportation. That gives us our total of 2,159 students. We have a few other students with district paid special education services at other public schools. And we always, since the pandemic started to track our homeschooled students because we saw a huge increase in the number of students who were homeschooled during the pandemic. What we're seeing, last year we had a kind of a blip of a real reduction. Now we're kind of leveled out as before pandemic was 25 and we're at 26 this year. So that is kind of the students we have now. We project that to be very similar next year. Oh, I should say, when I say very similar next year, one thing that we are seeing a steady decrease in is the number of students that are going to choice schools. So we were down 45 students this year and that's a continued decline. That's a goal of ours to have students recognize that you don't need to go to a magnet school to get an excellent education, that we have those things here as well. And we seem to be getting that message out, I think not so much by saying it, but by seeing what we're doing. So I want to just share with you a little bit about the results of the investment that you supported last year because our investments do bring results and I want you to be able to see that. One of the, oh, I should say, our athletic investments this year have been pretty stellar. One of the investments that we've made very heavily over the past two years, really since I've been superintendent, is improving mental health services. We started that before the pandemic, but the pandemic, as you know, really exacerbated our students' needs or exposed needs that existed before but really weren't met during the pandemic. And we have increased our elementary social workers, so, or all our social workers. When I first started as superintendent, we had one social worker for five schools. We now have one in every school. Two of them at this time are grant-funded. One is in the ARPSER grant. We will be putting that back in the budget, or that's what I'm proposing to you tonight. The other is in a mental health grant that we received last year that we will be able to continue to utilize for the next two years. But you can see the caseloads of those paid positions, which is the top part, knowing that these are meetings that they're having with students every day or every other day, but there are, you know, specific services that we provide to our students that are time-consuming, as well as support for a larger group of students that are on their caseload and teachers. We do have some services that we are not paying for through UCFS and those have been fantastic for us to be able to have a UCFS clinic at the high school, which we've had for a while. This is the first year of a mental health clinic at Tile. And that's really servicing students in a way that is absolutely necessary. It will enable us to, we are paying for Project Courage Counseling through the ARPSER grant to drop the Tile portion of that because we're being able to absorb them in the UCFS clinic, though I am proposing that we continue to use the ARPSER grant to manage our Project Courage and that's a substance abuse counseling at the high school in Palmer. You will see why in a minute when you see the results of that. Some of our results of those investments are highlighted in the CRAC survey that was just recently done in December and January. We surveyed students in grades eight to 12. And that was around substance abuse, around mental health, to try and just get a picture of improvements. And I've put in the first column the results from the survey that we did in 2020 and compared it to the survey that we just completed now. I have had thoughts of hurting myself, down from 29.3% of students agreed to that to 27. I have felt sad or hopeless almost every day for two weeks, so much that it stopped me from my usual activities, down from 28.8 to 23. I seriously consider it considered attempting suicide, down from 16.3 to 13. A lot of drugs are sold in my community, down from 41 to 33. I've consumed alcohol recently, down from 13.4 to 10. I've used marijuana recently, down from 14.7 to 8.6. And the next ones I've grouped together because up is good. I believe my life is going in the right direction, up from 79.2 to 81.2. I have a number of good qualities, just up very slightly. I try hard to do good work at school, up 3.2%. And I feel safe at school, up from 79 to 84.1%. These are speaking to the increased work of our social workers, the added substance abuse counseling, the added school security officers and school resource officers. We take that a little bit further and just look at climate results, and these are examples of climate results from Tile. We do climate surveys at every school in the district and I pulled the Tile surveys to just take a look at. The left column over here is parent results. These are staff results, and I'll show you a student result in a second. Parents were saying that they believe their student is physically safe at school, up from 71.6 to 82.6. Parents say my child likes to come to school every day, up from 76.1 to 88. Staff results, I feel physically safe at school, up from 86.4 to 95.5. I enjoy coming to school every day, up from 59.2 to 88.6. Remember that middle school pandemic recovery was tough. Student results, I just picked the most important question to me, which I just love. I feel like I'm part of this school community. In fall of 2022, 30.1% of students agreed. In fall of 23, 85.3% of students agreed. This again is increased district social workers, increased counseling, having both the substance abuse and the mental health, having the safety and security, increased access to special ed teachers, maybe even the increased health class, though that just started this year. But that was a position that you added to the budget last year, that we got a P B health teacher that could support more health instruction. Academic success. We have received state and national recognition in our schools as we have in past years. This year, that was for Oakdale as a school of distinction based on the high growth of their high-needs students in math. In Murphy, the high growth of their high-needs students in ELA. And Montville High School was placed on the Advanced Placement Honor Roll for increased access to college courses in high school. And again, if you were just at that E and E committee meeting, you know exactly what that's about. This is just a chart showing the turnaround that we've started at Oakdale in math. Math scores for students and these lines, the dark line is high-needs students, the lighter line is all students. And this is a chart of their growth in math over time. Pre-pandemic, we were like that. Pandemic, we were here, and now we're recovering. Point I need to have you see in all of these things is that mental health data is an improvement, but it's not there. You know, I certainly don't want the numbers of students that are stating that, you know, they still are using substance or don't feel good about themselves. And similarly, we're not satisfied with this. But we are showing that we know how to turn this around. And the investments we've made academically have helped us to do that. Another one is here. This is the Murphy ELA growth where you can see the...
Time is six P M. We'll call this meeting to order with the pledge allegiance in a moment of silence, please. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Agenda, no alterations to the agenda since this is a special meeting. Presentations. We'll start with Tile Middle School, please. All right, Ms. Lomington and I are gonna call up Louis Otero Masara. Come on up here, Louis. His family's here in the front row. Louis is a seventh grader at Tile who has made tremendous growth. He's so resilient. He has compassion for others. He struggled, like a lot of middle school students do, at times with the transition. There's a lot of things going on. And he's always kept an attitude of trying to help others, work with others. And he's made so much growth this year. About a month ago, we put him in our Pathways program. He's made such great strides. He's bought in. He's at school every day. And he's just a joy to be around. So his growth is something that we're all really, really proud of. Now, he is a giant WWE wrestling fan. Truth be told, I was a huge wrestling fan myself, growing up. Not anymore, but I was. And we talk wrestling now all the time. So what we decided to do was get him a Tile Championship Wrestling Belt. He is a Tile heavyweight champion, so he's gonna bring that with him and carry it around. And I told him if there was a table here, I was gonna put him through the table, but... So Louis, great job. Keep up the good work and ready to go. All right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
To the Palmer Campus.
It's my pleasure to ask to introduce you guys to Nick Holt. Come on up, Nick. So this is Nick. Nick started with at the PBL and Pathways Campus his junior year, fourth quarter. And came to us, he was having some difficulty with attendance, kind of getting to school. It was a struggle for him. We became text buddies, mom, dad, and somebody else. We were texting daily, trying to get Nick to come to school. I remember a lot of texts. He'd get here by nine thirty. Gets better. There's three more periods, right? Well, I'm pleased to say he's completely turned that around. He was one of my first students to arrive. He arrives about seven, seven-ten most days, right in that range. So pretty impressive. Tenderness is really, truly not an issue for him anymore. I did ask a couple of teachers to share some comments about you. So here is what your teachers have to say. I found Nick to be a standout student, both for his own benefit as well as his role as a peer. He sets a high standard of participation in the classroom, is always personable and wants to succeed. I'm proud to see him applying for colleges and even more proud of the growth he has shown this year alone with his commitment to his own education. He made the most of his time here at the PBL and Pathways Campus and continues to be a pleasure to work with. Pleasure to work with him. A second teacher said Nick has conducted himself this year in a manner that represents how we would want all of our seniors to carry themselves. He is humble, unassuming, and has plenty of tools for future success. Nick is smart and possesses sound academic skills. He is responsible, accountable, and dependable. Nick's level of maturity in the class that he exhibits on a daily basis sets the bar high for behavior and achievement at our school. Third teacher said Nick has shown significant growth this school year, both academically and socially. Nick is passionate about his education and is an amazing role model in the classroom. I love having Nick in my classroom and I am so proud of him earning the Montville Marvel Award. He truly deserves it. Also, a classmate is here with Nick tonight, also happens to be his girlfriend, probably a future Montville Marvel. This is what she had to say about Nick. Nick is a type of student every school deserves. He makes me want to go to school even on hard days. Having him part of our class and school community is truly something special. He is always willing to help others no matter what. The progress he has made this school year is honestly incredible. Seeing him be able to come in every single day and make the honor roll makes me and so many other people proud of him. Nick, we're really happy to introduce you as a Montville Marvel for February.
Hey, Montville High School, please. Hey. Before I call my Marvels up, I just wanted to say to Louis, that's a cool belt. Can you see the rocks back?
Yep.
The rock is back. I do watch. I know I'm supposed to watch. I still watch, okay? All right. I'm gonna take this opportunity to bring up Alex Clemmons, Rich Sorillo, and Nick Sibilia, please. All right. Montville High School is proud to recognize Rich Sorillo, Alex Clemmons, and Nick Sibilia, who have demonstrated outstanding commitment and dedication to our students and their academic needs. Their unwavering commitment has greatly enhanced the educational experience for our students. These three run our Student Support Center or our Tutor and Center here at the high school. We, when I say we, myself, Mr. Danowitz, and the rest of the staff at Montville High School, feel that this acknowledgement is long overdue. And we cannot imagine life at Montville High School without the Student Support Center and more importantly, these three in it. Rich, Alex, and Nick have formed a great team and worked tirelessly to support our students in all academic areas. Their knowledge and understanding of a wide variety of content and subject areas are remarkable. Together, like I said, they form a great team, but individually, they contribute in unique ways. Coming out of the pandemic, Rich joined us and was integral in and our credit recovery students for our students brought a couple of new credit recovery programs to the high school and created opportunities for our students to regain lost credits. He is also a tremendous support to our students and teachers as he offers push-in support into academic courses. As part of her role in the Student Support Center, Alex has taken on our Focus Study Call Program. These are students that need a little extra focus and support in their academic studies and increase and work on building supports and structure within their day. Alex also serves as a liaison between those students and the teachers and sometimes the work that they're missing. Nick is the heartbeat of that Student Support Center. He works extremely hard to support as many students as he can on a daily basis. And I'm truly amazed by the array of knowledge and empathy that Nick has for our students. When asked to describe all three, one student said they are incredibly, incredibly patient and supportive, helping me not only understand the material, but also helping me believe in myself and my abilities. One teacher in the building remarked by saying their dedication to our students is truly commendable. They go above and beyond to ensure that every student receives the support they need. We are fortunate to have such dedicated professionals on our team. For all of this, they are our Montville Marvels.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Now hoping you could say, Rich?
Yes.
Congratulations. Nick?
Appreciate you. Congratulations. Thanks a lot.
Congratulations to all the Marvels. It's the best thing we do at every single board event meeting. I say it every single meeting. All right. The next item is the presentation of superintendent's recommendations for the 2024-2025 Montville Public Schools Operating Budget.
Thank you very much. I will say, if you're in the Marvel audience and you don't want to stay for this budget presentation, my feelings won't be hurt, but it's an important presentation because this is building the funding for our schools next year. Of course. Quick photo op before I go into it. I'm gonna read our vision statement. I start the budget presentation each year by projecting the vision statement. We're proud of our vision. We believe it's important and compelling. It requires high-quality staff. It requires programs, facilities, and all of those things are the things that we fund with our budget. Our state funding, if you were here when Erica Haynes presented the explanation of how school finance work, she talked about the fact that some of our funds come from the state. And from the state, we have the Education Cost Sharing Grant, which is that twelve million eight hundred and two thousand eight hundred and sixty-four dollar grant. That is proposed to be level funded from last year. So we would have the exact same E C S funding that we do this year. It's interesting to note, though, that for this 2024 year, there was extra excess cost funds that had been applied to our E C S funding. So it does raise that total to twelve million eight hundred and seventy-seven thousand. The town has only booked twelve million seven hundred and twelve thousand. So there is some play with money there. The excess cost grant is a harder one for us to get a handle on exactly what that will be because it's based on students and their costs. But based on the December grant payment report, it looks like that excess cost grant would be about six hundred and ninety-nine thousand four hundred and three dollars. The town has booked four hundred and fifty thousand dollars as revenue for excess costs. Again, there's a little room for play in that area. And then the Adult Education Entitlement is a very small amount of money we get to put towards our adult education program. That's about half of what the adult education program costs. And I shouldn't say we get. All of that money goes directly to the town. The history of Board of Education funding, over the last couple of years, we've been extremely appreciative of the level of funding that the town has provided to the Board of Education. With the funds that they have provided, we have been able to move beyond just maintaining. And there was a period, you can see years ago, when we really did just barely maintain. That's when, if you were at E and E, we lost things like the C N A program because every year we had to cut to make things work. For the last couple of years, we've been able to put in some really important programs and we're very appreciative of that. I should point out that for the last two years, the appropriation from the town has been as composed of appropriation through the taxes and also the appropriation two years ago through the Town ARPA funding. And for this current year, two hundred thousand through the Cannabis Relief Fund. So that was used to augment to get to our total appropriation. Our enrollment, we always take a look at when we think about funding because we look at how many students are we talking about? If there's a big difference in enrollment, increase or decrease? And obviously, that would impact our funding. We haven't seen that for the last couple of years. The line in the center sort of is delineating this year and forward. And we are seeing enrollment projections to be very level. This was a professional study that we just commissioned this past year. We had to as a condition of a grant application. But it's also very helpful because they take a look with all of the information the demographers have at, you know, what they project the enrollment to be. And in fact, in actual numbers, from 2023 to 2033, they expect to see the exact same number of students ten years from now as we have today. We'll get to a little bit later. The students themselves, however, are different. In other words, the number of special education students is changing quite a bit while the overall enrollment stays steady. Looking at our enrollment for this year, just so you can get an idea, we have one thousand nine hundred and thirty-four students in our K to twelve program. Another two hundred and five students in programs that we pay for, whether they're the P K or Transition Program that are at book and our K to twelve program, whether they're tuitions at magnet schools or the Ledgerd Voex School or other choice schools, we pay for those students' tuitions. We do not pay for the technical school students' tuitions. The only district responsibility for them is transportation. That gives us our total of two thousand one hundred and fifty-nine students. We have a few other students with district paid special education services at other public schools. And we always, since the pandemic started to track our homeschooled students because we saw a huge increase in the number of students who were homeschooled during the pandemic. What we're seeing, last year, we had a kind of a blip of a real reduction. Now we're kind of leveled out as before pandemic was twenty-five and we're at twenty-six this year. So that is kind of the students we have now. We project that to be very similar next year. Oh, I should say, when I say very similar next year, one thing that we are seeing a steady decrease in is the number of students that are going to choice schools. So we were down forty-five students this year and that's a continued decline. That's a goal of ours to have students recognize that you don't need to go to a magnet school to get an excellent education, that we have those things here as well. And we seem to be getting that message out. I think not so much by saying it, but by seeing what we're doing. So I want to just share with you a little bit about the results of the investment that you supported last year because our investments do bring results and I want you to be able to see that. One of the, oh, I should say, our athletic investments this year have been pretty stellar. One of the investments that we've made very heavily over the past few years, really since I've been superintendent, is improving mental health services. We started that before the pandemic, but the pandemic, as you know, really exacerbated our students' needs or exposed needs that existed before but really weren't met during the pandemic. And we have increased our elementary social workers. So, or all our social workers. When I first started as superintendent, we had one social worker for five schools. We now have one in every school. Two of them at this time are grant funded. One is in the ARPSER grant. We will be putting that back in the budget or that's what I'm proposing to you tonight. The other is in a mental health grant that we received last year that we will be able to continue to utilize for the next two years. But you can see the caseloads of those paid positions, which is the top part, knowing that these are meetings that they're having with students every day or every other day, what there are, you know, specific services that we provide to our students that are time-consuming, as well as support for a larger group of students that are on their caseload and teachers. We do have some services that we are not paying for through U C F S and those have been fantastic for us to be able to have a U C F S clinic at the high school, which we've had for a while. And this is the first year of a mental health clinic at Tile. And that's really servicing students in a way that is absolutely necessary. It will enable us to, we are paying for Project Courage Counseling through the ARPSER grant to drop the Tile portion of that because we're being able to absorb them in the U C F S clinic. Though I am proposing that we continue to use the ARPSER grant to manage our Project Courage and that's a substance abuse counseling at the high school in Palmer. You will see why in a minute when you see the results of that. Some of our results of those investments are highlighted in the C R X survey that was just recently done. December and January, we surveyed students in grades eight to twelve. And that was around substance abuse, around mental health, to try and just get a picture of improvements. And I've put in the first column the results from the survey that we did in 2020 and compared it to the survey that we just completed now. I have had thoughts of hurting myself, down from twenty-nine point three percent of students agreed to that to twenty-seven. I have felt sad or hopeless almost every day for two weeks, so much that it stopped me from my usual activities, down from twenty-eight point eight to twenty-three. I've seriously considered, it's considered attempting suicide, down from sixteen point three to thirteen. A lot of drugs are sold in my community, down from forty-one to thirty-three. I've consumed alcohol recently, down from thirteen point four to ten. I've used marijuana recently, down from fourteen point seven to eight point six. And the next ones I've grouped together because up is good. I believe my life is going in the right direction, up from seventy-nine point two to eighty-one point two. I have a number of good qualities, just up very slightly. I try hard to do good work at school, up three point two percent. And I feel safe at school, up from seventy-nine to eighty-four point one percent. These are speaking to the increased work of our social workers, the added substance abuse counseling, the added school security officers and school resource officers. We can take that a little bit further and just look at climate results. And these are examples of climate results from Tile. We do climate surveys at every school in the district and I pulled the Tile surveys to just take a look at. The left column over here is parent results. These are staff results and I'll show you a student results in a second. Parents were saying that they believe their student is physically safe at school, up from seventy-one point six to eighty-two point six. Parents saying my child likes to come to school every day, up from seventy-six point one to eighty-eight. Staff results, I feel physically safe at school, up from eighty-six point four to ninety-five point five. I enjoy coming to school every day, up from fifty-nine point two to eighty-eight point six. Remember that middle school pandemic recovery was tough. Student results, I just picked the most important question to me, which I just love. I feel like I'm part of this school community. In fall of 2022, thirty point one percent of students agreed. In fall of 23, eighty-five point three percent of students agreed. This, again, is increased district social workers, increased counseling, having both substance abuse and the mental health, having the safety and security, increased access to special ed teachers, maybe even the increased health class, though that just started this year. But that was a position that you added to the budget last year, that we got a P B health teacher that could support more health instruction. Academic success. We have received state and national recognition in our schools as we have in past years. This year, that was for Oakdale as a school of distinction based on the high growth of their high need students in math. In Murphy, the high growth of their high need students in E L A. At Monville High School, was placed on the Advanced Placement Honorable for increased access to college courses in high school. And again, if you were just at that E and E committee meeting, you know exactly what that's about. This is just a chart showing the turnaround that we've started at Oakdale in math. Math scores for students and these lines. The dark line is high need students. The lighter line is all students. And this is a chart of their growth in math over time. Pre pandemic, we were like that. Pandemic, we were here and now we're recovering. Point I need to have you see in all of these things is that mental health data is an improvement, but it's not there. You know, I certainly don't want the numbers of students that are stating that, you know, they still are using substance or don't feel good about themselves. And similarly, we're not satisfied with this. But we are showing that we know how to turn this around. And the investments we've made academically have helped us to do that. Another one is here. This is the Murphy E L A growth, where you can see the high need students' growth actually surpassed the growth of their all-student group. This is the grant funding we use for elementary teachers. It's increased special education support. It's the addition of E L A coaches, which you phased in over time. Whoop, sorry. And I'll put in our athletic success as well. Certainly, the full-time trainer did not produce these results. It's a comprehensive program. But the fact that the board supports our athletic programs has led to a place where we're receiving multiple championships. We have many all-star athletes and a very large number of athletes served. Adding that trainer enables us to do that safely. I show you all that to say to you that I believe money invested in our schools is money invested wisely and that we think carefully about what our needs are. We apply that money and monitor the work that we're doing to make sure that we see the results from that money. I always bring my notes up and forget to look it down. But we have work to do. I believe that the budget that we're presenting now is a very responsible fiscal budget to continue that work and continue to move us in that right direction. So the first budget run and the way we do the budget every year is the first thing we do is just roll over all of our current services, looking at next year's costs and making changes as we think appropriate based on numbers of students, numbers of special ed students, numbers of I E Ps, supplies that we need. So all of the things that are currently programmed in our budget, what would they cost next year for the students that we have next year? And we look at all the students we have this year and move them up a year and think that through really carefully. The difference this year is we have put into this budget the staffing that's in the ARPSER grant because that is our current services. They weren't in the budget last year, but they are in this first budget run that I'm gonna show you. After I go through the first budget run, which is that rollover budget, I'll talk to you about the things that our administrative team has prioritized for. These are a couple of things that we still think we really need to have in the budget in order to continue that positive trajectory. First is looking at the numbers of teachers that we have in our classrooms. And this is a chart that shows our projected enrollment next year in each of our three elementary schools at every grade level, how many sections that we believe that we need in those classes and what is the change. What you'll see here is that I think we can cut a kindergarten section at Mohegan. I think we need to add, or I know we need to add, a fourth grade section at Murphy. And I believe that there are two sections at Oakdale, though, don't hold me to those two sections. These enrollment numbers change every month and every month we change the, based on who's in our seats this year, we roll them up a year and change our projections for next year. But what we're proposing here is a net reduction of two classroom teachers based upon looking at our enrollment. And this rollover budget factors in that net reduction of two classroom teachers. I have not taken reductions to kindergarten teachers based on the change in kindergarten age. There is too much uncertainty about what that legislation's gonna look like at the end of this legislative session. What I have heard most recently is that the proposal will be that it will be parent, we will assess students through the waiver process, but ultimately it will be parent choice. So I'm not comfortable saying that we could reduce kindergarten teachers based on that information, aside from, I think, based on the numbers. And those kindergarten numbers come from that N E S D E C study. Oops. You know, come back. Well. This is what it did to Erica. Erica's a more poised presenter than I am. I will do my best. The N E S D E C study, they say this is the birth rate. What would be the number percent of those students that go to kindergarten five years later? I divide them into schools based upon the percentage in kindergarten in each school the year before. So based on that, nothing to do with the kindergarten waiver process and change in age. I think we can reduce the section in kindergarten at Mohegan. If the waiver continues as it is and we think about where these two positions come from, maybe it will be kindergarten. You know, that remains to be seen. Do know that if I reduce kindergarten numbers, I increase preschool numbers. So that would be a teacher that simply makes a lawful move. Questions on how we're figuring out this reduction? Then looking at secondary enrollment projections, Tile is projected to be right exactly where they are. They've got a large volume of students moving through. That'll be in the eighth grade next year. And their class sizes, we aim at Tile to, you know, strive to be somewhere between 2022. Of course, the distribution isn't always perfect, but looks like we'll be able to do that at Tile without any change in staffing at all. The high school enrollment is increasing by eighteen students. And we can't talk about class sizes there because there are so many classes and they choose the classes that they're in. But we believe with the number of choices they have in classes, we can accommodate those eighteen students without any change in staffing. Likewise, at Palmer, Palmer has two programs, a P B L program and a Pathways program. The Pathways program is the one that you increased last year by adding another special ed teacher. And that enabled us to actually bring, we have, I'll spill something that's in a later slide, but my spoiler alert, we have brought six outplayed students back to Palmer and only put one student out this year. So a net increase of five students at Palmer,[1774.24] So a net increase of five students at Palmer, that's because we created that second pathway section. So that was a budget investment that's paid for itself multiple times. And um, the other thing I'll tell you about the Palmer numbers is that the ninth grade is always increases because most of our ninth graders go to the high school, but then may, we may ultimately say they go to Palmer, so that ninth grade usually grows a little bit over time. Transition Academy is projected to be exactly what it is, that's our students eighteen to twenty two. So, all of that about staff brings me to the biggest driver of our budget increase, which is our cost per staff. And the cost per staff, salaries, not benefits, just salaries, accounts for seventy four point six five percent of our budget increase. That includes not just certified staff, but all of our staff members. Part of that cost is attributable to their increase in wages and contracts. Administrator's contract is a two percent raise. The M E A contract, that's our certified teachers, was just negotiated this year. We got one of the lower rates in the state at the time that we settled that contract. Teachers that are on steps get one percent per step, one percent increase in their step advancement. And teachers at this top step get a three percent increase. We have counteracted that contractual increase in teachers' wages with those two teachers that are reducing at the elementary school. Um, but there's another bigger driver to staff this seventy four point six five percent increase than their wage increases. And that's the people that we're bringing back from the grant, grant, R P S R funding. So I told you in this rollover budget, I'm rolling over exactly what we have, whether it was in the operating budget last year or whether it was in the R P S R grant. So we start this year not in the grant, in the budget with two twenty nine point four or five certified F T Es. That's the full-time equivalence for a teacher. By reducing the two elementary, I take it down to two twenty seven. And we can also reduce point four or five of hearing impaired teacher due to a change in student population. But I have taken five elementary teachers that were in the R P S R grant and moved them into the budget. I've taken an elementary social worker that was in the R P S R grant and moved him into the budget. And I've taken an elementary preschool teacher who was in that grant and moved her into the budget. So in the end, when you take a look at this, I started at two twenty seven from last year's budget. I'm putting seven teachers in. Make sense still? We also have non-certified staff in the R P S R grant that's accounting for some of that increase. So um, I'll go do that first and then I'll talk about a little complicated thing in nursing. Um, there are four school security officers in the R P S R grant. I have returned those to the budget. There are five support room tutors in the R P S R grant. I have returned those to the budget. Monitors and paras, we are level funding those, except for the increased contractual increase for them. The nursing staff is a little bit complicated. I had two part-time nurses who resigned mid-year this year. They were required to provide services for a student and we could not, we posted as quickly as we could, looking to say, could we get one full-time nurse or two part-time nurses? We could not. We had to go to an agency to contract out nursing services for this year. So I am taking those two part-time nurses this year and had to replace them with an agency contract. You'll see that later in our agenda tonight in a budget transfer because it has to go from salaries to a contracted service. But I am also next year able to remove one nurse and one C N A from the budget because there's a student that required nursing services who will not need those next year. So that's it. So the nursing in the end is a net, it'll be more expensive to hire a full-time person than two part-time people. And that's what I'm proposing doing, just because it would have benefits. But I'm hoping I'll be able to find it. We cannot find and retain part-time nurses.
Could you repeat that last sentence?
Yes. Finding and retaining, finding and retaining part-time nurses with the nursing shortage we have right now is not something we're able to do. The only way we're able to do that is if we have people that retire from our own system and that's what we had. But after they retire, the only one at work doing that for so long and then it's time to really retire.
Additionally, we've had problems hiring full-time nurses. So that's why, I mean, we did advertise for full-time nurses, but we weren't able to attract them.
We're hoping with this, you know, we'll go out quickly. However, I have to say, given that you've read in the paper some other towns that had nursing services provided for them are being told they need to do their own nurses. There's going to be a little competition for nurses this year as well, along with all the other competition we have to stop. Employee benefits is another piece of that staff increase. Many of those people in the R P S R grant, their benefits were also in the R P S R grant. But um, so we are bringing those all back. The health insurance, the percent of the increase that health insurance takes is seventeen point one one percent of the total increase in my rollover budget is for health insurance. Um, we are projecting that rates will go up about twelve to thirteen percent. That's a projection at this time. One of the things, I was talking to Will just before the meeting, because we've been scrambling for the last two weeks, is this is really hard to do because you just can't land the plane. The second you think, okay, we got the budget solved, we're going to run it, print it, fill the binders, something changes. So this is, as I present this tonight, what it was when we printed Friday night, we printed everything. Um, but it won't be what it is next week and it won't be what it is the week after. So we will, as we're going through the budget workshops, as you're new to the board, we'll take a look at this and say, you know, what do you want to do? Do you want to add anything? Do you want to cut anything? What are you comfortable sending to the town? But each week we'll also say to you, okay, here's an update based on what we just learned. So, you know, you'll stay tuned to that constant change in. Um, one thing that is reflecting the savings in our budget this year is the M E R S pension. That is because last year, it's exactly what I was just talking about, at the time that we went to budget and in fact, when the board approved it and the town approved it, we were projecting a cost for M E R S that exceeded what it actually ended up being. So our cost last year, or I'm sorry, for this current year is reduced from what's in the budget and we're seeing the savings there. And even increasing one and a half percent, we're still seeing the savings in that M E R S account.
And that's an assumption because we don't have no project, they won't set numbers until March.
Well, we said that last year and it was June.
Right.
So we're hoping they'll set numbers.
It was a purchase of plan last year. Because we have the number we thought we had, but maybe we start to get something that's saving.
It, this is all, and Kathy says it too all the time, a budget's an estimate, it's volatile, that's your favorite word. Um, so, but we're doing the best we can. And what we've done in a lot of this, and you'll see it a little bit later, is we've taken the lowest cost assumption in many things. Um, so we're trying to make sure that we have the lowest budget you possibly can come forward with. And I'll show you what I mean, an example of that in just a minute. The biggest takeaway from these last couple of slides is of the percent increase in the rollover budget, ninety one point six, six one percent is either salaries or benefits, it's staff. When we talk to our parents group, our Safety and Security Committee, which is a large community group, our administrative team, and we talk about, we're really worried about the R P S R grant ending and our funding cliff, what are our priorities? Everyone says your priorities are staff. Those are the things that make the biggest difference for students. We know that, that's why you see staff recognized routinely in our Monville markets along with students because they make a big difference in students. But um, my budget presentation of things driving the increase is relatively short, because we've just seen it, it's the staff. Magnet school tuition is a savings, but it's a risky savings. I'm taking it, but I'm going to, I want your eyes wide open in this savings. So in the twenty three, twenty four budget, we believed that tuition for, and this is our regular ed students going to magnet schools that we're paying for, that tuition cost for those students would be six hundred and eighteen thousand and five dollars, what was that, five? In actuality, this year we're running over budget and we believe it'll be more like six hundred and seventy eight thousand dollars. That's based on the actual students in those seats when we get the bills and the rates. When we build a budget, we're projecting who those students are. We typically take every single student who's in a magnet school, roll them up a grade, and then bring in a group that's the same size as the lowest grade was. We call some people that we think might be, you know, it's like the eighth grade year and that magnet program ends. Are you going to go on to a high school magnet program or are you going to come back? So we do some hand calling of people, particularly expensive students, because these are costs for their regular ed services. Another three hundred and seventy seven thousand dollars is for special ed services for students at magnet schools who require special ed services. At any rate, what happened in the legislation last year is they froze the tuition, so they couldn't increase the tuition. And the state committed to paying forty two percent of that tuition cost. Using that, we come to a budget number for this year of three hundred and ninety eight thousand dollars. A big savings in our budget. The governor's budget does not maintain that commitment. It does not keep the freeze in tuition and it does not keep the state paying forty two percent. We talked to Erica Haynes, I've talked to her a couple of times. She's at presentary, like, what should we do here? Should we take this? Shouldn't we? She said, your legislators committed to that, they're still meeting, lots of people are going and speaking to legislature. Try and keep it for now. So we are proposing a budget with the three hundred and ninety eight thousand dollar tuition tag. We've calculated what the cost would be if that doesn't work out, just so you'll see it. Um, we've not increased the tuition now, we're counting on them to back the commitment. Here's what, if we pay a hundred percent of tuition, our cost would be six hundred and eighty seven oh eighty six. And if you factor in they're also allowed to increase their rates, which is up to three percent, that would actually total seven hundred and seven thousand dollars. Or three hundred and nine thousand more than I put in the budget. One thing we're trying really hard to do is, is not have anyone think there's spare money in our budget. If I budgeted that whole amount, I was afraid people would look at that and say, well, we can cut three hundred thousand dollars because maybe you won't have to pay it. We're taking, we've taken the lowest cost alternative possible in building this budget.
We may be coming back to you and say we can't do that.
Yes, and I'll explain that to you just a little bit.
I'm sorry, but.
That's our workshops over the next several weeks. Um, there is a legislative, um, there are lots of people being told to go speak tomorrow. Um, they're talking about that, a hundred and fifty million dollars and we'll see what happens. I think we'll know more within a couple of weeks of, I mean, they obviously won't have finished the session, but we'll have an idea where this is leaning. The cost of supplies reflects a budget savings and that's because our gas and oil and fuel oil and natural gas costs have all decreased. So we're taking decreases in all of those. That's current market rates. Kathy is seeking locks right now, she has communicated to them, we want a lock. And we're waiting for them to get back to us because I don't want to get greedy. These are nice savings for us to see from last year's budget and I'd like to be able to lock those in.
The one that they can't lock is natural gas, as they say, it's cheaper to save with a regulated company versus locking. We had locked it a long time ago, which we had already locked, but we haven't been able to do it recently.
All the other supplies have been level funded. That means potentially if costs increase, there's still a three percent inflation rate that we will buy less. But we have not increased any of our supply items and we have decreased our, all of our fuel. Outplay students, this is something remarkable, you haven't seen this from me in a couple of years. Last year, tuition and transportation for outplay students accounted for twenty nine point oh five percent of our budget increase. This year, it's eight point eight three percent of our budget increase. We made a commitment to you last year that we were going to try really hard to reduce outplacements to serve more students here, to bring students back. Um, Palmer is the shining example of that, where we really have seen a significant return of students from outplacement. That doesn't mean we don't still need to outplace students, but we've kind of stopped that. We're way over budget in outplace and tuition. Now Kathy's going to say to me, the year's not over yet and you're only a couple of expensive students away from being over budget. But based on right now, we're looking like we're going to be able to come in very close to budget in these areas. And that really pleases me because that was a commitment that we, we just said we can't continue to do this over time. It's taking money away from our programs. So that's a real success for us. I don't know where it'll be next year, you know, like it could be up and down, but fingers crossed that we're able to put services in place through our special ed teachers, our mental health team that actually make a real difference over time. Electricity costs, stop for a second, we have not increased electricity costs. Um, our electricity costs are level funded based on the advice that we got from, oh, you see Steve Carroll there. We're going to throw him under the bus if this goes up, don't count that. But our rates are locked, we have increases in distribution that we believe will be offset by efficiencies that we've achieved over time and you've heard Steve talk about his efficiencies many times. Um, you should know, and I put the slide in electricity here, even though it's just level funded, because I wanted to take a minute to say to you, we won't have H V A C in place next year to impact this budget, but when we do, the impact of that on electricity will be something. Don't know what, but it will be something. Um, the other thing I just put here, because I didn't know where else to put it, is I just want people to be aware of a really concerning piece of legislation that impacts us budgetarily hugely and I'm not sure how much benefit we get from it. And that is legislation that requires a district to complete comprehensive H V A C studies in each of our buildings. Technically, we're supposed to have those studies done by January twenty twenty five, but in actuality, what the state said is if at least you have an appointment for the, you know, a scheduled inspection coming up, we'll let you go to twenty six. The cost for those studies, I had no idea when I first heard the legislation, like, okay, we'll have some studies though. This is a district that went out to bid and they got bids ranging from twenty four cents to thirty three cents a square foot. These are our square footages, these are the ranges of what those inspections will cost. Twenty, thirty, forty, fifty thousand dollars a school. We are hoping that legislation will change so that, first, I'd love for it to go away because one thing I think is, our town is committed to making great H V A C improvements. Why would we inspect what we have when we know that we bonded to improve our HVAC systems in all of our buildings? And we've asked that of the state, like, can we delay this five years while we do all those improvements? We have not gotten an answer. Um, they are talking about potentially letting districts have five years, like, maybe stagger this over five years instead of doing them all within a year or two. I've not put anything in the budget for this year for this because of two things. One, I don't want to do these inspections before we've done the H V A C work. And two, we couldn't possibly schedule them because the people bidding, there are five companies bidding on these from as far away as New Jersey and they're booked. So, you know, this, this is going to be really a scramble for all of the schools in the state to get these done. So our rollover budget is maintaining exactly what we have now, whether it's already in the budget or whether it's in the R P S R grant, but taking into account the actual students we'll have next year. And, okay, that number I don't have memorized, forty five million, two hundred and twenty thousand, six hundred and sixteen dollars. That's one point six million and change above our current appropriation or a three point eight three percent increase above our budget this year. That's step one, okay, that's the rollover. I've not talked to you yet about what we think we need to add to it, so just stay tuned, but it's not a time. This I put here for you to see, if I put those magnet school costs back in, the part the state was going to pick up, then the rollover cost for the full cost for the magnet tuition would go up about three hundred thousand dollars. That is taking the tuition cost a hundred percent to district and giving them all a three percent increase, which is what they're proposing they be allowed to do. That raises the percent increase to four point five four percent. All right. My recommendations beyond that rollover budget are part two of this. And when I say my recommendations, they're my recommendations that have come to me from a team of people. And I will turn over some of the talking to them. There are only three. And those three are, you've heard this one, like I'm a broken record, um, increase full-time paraprofessionals, add a high school special ed teacher. Last year you added five special ed teachers, they went to every building but the high school. So we still need to put that special ed teacher in the high school. And the third one is to put onto our staff a P C B A, which is a certified, a board certified behavior analyst. Right now we use contracted services for that and we're not able to meet our needs. But we'll explain these all in detail to you. And after I'm done, because I'm not new to this, I will give you a binder that has a lot more detail. I just wanted to be able to have everyone pay attention to this first and then we'll go through what's in the binder after that. So the para situation, there's a lot of detail in the binder, pages two to five kind of explain what these costs would be, why. But I don't think I need to talk about it much because you have heard this before. Of our para staff, only twenty two are full-time, we have a hundred part-time people. In a building, particularly Mohegan, where they have the RISE program, we are managing a lot of adults. Unfortunately, those adults don't stay. So at Mohegan alone, fourteen paraprofessionals have resigned so far this year. In the district, thirty three paraprofessionals have resigned so far this year. Twenty two of those thirty three said they resigned to take full-time jobs. So in other words, I would infer that for most of them, we would have been able to keep them here if we had that full-time position in district. The tricky part is what would be the cost of this? And the largest difference between a full-time para and a part-time para is the health insurance. Full-time paras are eligible for health insurance, they pay a percent, but the district pays a large percent. Of the cost of that insurance, part-time paras are not. So the unknown is, will that new full-time person be a single individual person on their parents' plan who takes a waiver, and that health insurance cost to us is $1,500? Or will they be a family who takes a full plan, and that health insurance cost to us is well over $30,000? That's a big difference in what is that full-time para going to cost us. So what we've said to you in the past is, well, the increase of, I'm going to take these two part-time positions and make them a full-time position, take into account their MERS pension, their health insurance, and their wages, is going to be somewhere between $1,600 and $30,000. But it could be anywhere between there. So that's why we've been kind of slow to recommend more full-time paras, because $30,000 is a lot of money. Kathy and I took a look at our 22 full-time paras and said, maybe this is not as risky as we think. Because of those 22 full-time paras, 15 have waived insurance coverage. And those 15 are our most recent hires, the people that we've most recently moved. Most of the people on insurance coverage as paras are paras that have been here a very long time. So, I'm optimistic that if we allocate $40,000 to hiring additional full-time paras, we'd be able to get more than one or two. But, I don't know. The way we did this, have done this in the past, is we've allocated a lump sum of money to put towards increasing our full-time para staff, and then we hire them one at a time until that sum of money is gone. So that's request number one, there's a lot more detail in the bunch of binders that you'll get, explaining that, showing you all the math of it, and some more information about the value of a para. And the next is special ed at the high school, I'm going to turn it over to the high school.
All right, I think this is a pretty, pretty simple request. It's just the increase in special education students that are expected to enter Montauk High School next year. We are actually exiting 14 special ed students but receiving 31. So that's a pretty, you know, it's a plus 17 margin there. And it's not necessarily a simple amendment, I could probably give the specifics of the middle school, but it's not as simple as, well, let's take one of their special ed teachers with their group of kids, because I believe there's a large number of special ed students still exist, still in the middle school that will require the services of that particular teacher.
So our numbers at the middle school are obviously going up, as we've talked about other years. But now those students are starting to trickle up to the high school, those large groups. So, that's what we're looking at. So we have the 31 coming from Tile, and that doesn't account for the students who move into district over the summer. So for example, and I'm just jumping in, we had nine special ed students move in last summer. And while that doesn't sound like a big number, that could be a whole caseload for a special ed teacher. So looking at that, we, you know, we're anticipating possibly 40 new special ed students at Montauk High School and only losing 14 next year.
And we had two special ed students roll in district this week. One at the high school and one at the PBL facilities campus as well, and it's only Tuesday. So, it's definitely a need, a need of ours, and it just really increasing the size where we're not as able to support these students in their either co-taught classes or in their support classes. And in addition to that, it's, I lost my train of thought, I'm sorry. In addition to that, we're struggling to, you know, meet their specific needs to their IDPs as effectively as we can.
So that really is, a lot of that is academic support blocks. So right now, we have about 13 or more students in each block. If we do get this addition of 40 students, academic supports will be 18 kids maybe. Caseloads will range about 20 students per case manager, which is very hard to manage.
Yes, some of those academic support classes, if minus the addition of a new teacher, would actually, the class size would be bigger than some of our, you know, regular class sizes.
The other addition we'll have next year, we do have a smaller group of students coming up from Tile who need individualized reading support. So, we're going to need to train one of our current special ed teachers in some systematic multi-sensory reading programming, so that they're allowed, so that they can work individually with those students, and that obviously has to be small groups. So that will take her out of play for at least probably two blocks a day. So we do need some money to fill some of our gaps.
And the important thing of that is the number of special ed sections that special ed teachers can teach determines the number of co-taught sections we can have. Co-taught sections by state guidance shouldn't be more than 50% special ed to 50% regular ed. If you don't have enough co-taught sections, then we exceed those 50% guidelines. And that's not a statute, but it's a guideline that's pretty important to try to adhere to. The other thing I just want to draw your attention to is, district-wide, our special ed numbers continue to increase. That is not just Montauk, that is something that's seen across the state and probably more than state. Questions for them on that request?
How many eighth graders do you have? What did you say, Donna? How many eighth graders do we have?
Total or special ed?
No, total.
Total, 152.
152?
Yeah.
That's not special ed children? Could you repeat what you said? I'm sorry.
There's 152 students in eighth grade. When you look at the number of those students receiving special education services, it's, you know, at the district, we're running at about 21%. It's a lot of special ed students. Those, these services are the difference, you know how you saw that slide where it's showing that high growth of high-needs students? If they don't grow faster than their non-high-needs peers, they're never catching up. The fact that our high-needs students in elementary school in ELA are growing faster than their non-special ed peers means they are on the pathway to catching up, and that's an amazing thing. So, this money, yes, it's an expense, but I think it's an expense well worth making because if we can take those students and have them start to grow, accelerate their rate of growth, so they're in a catch-up mode, that's an awesome thing. The next request is, in the rollover budget, but in talking to Will, he told me that we should really justify to you why this should stay in the rollover budget, and that is our academic tutors that are both at Tile and high school. And again, Greg and Rob will talk to you a little bit about the importance of that student support center in each building.
Sure, I could start with that Tile. Currently, this year, 115 students are receiving services from our ELA tutor, and 88 in the building from our math tutor. So those positions are just vital. Because we have a seven-period schedule, unlike the high school without a study hall period, it's hard for us to build in tier-two interventions for students, which is really a higher level of support that students need that are specific, skill-based interventions. Our tutoring, our tutors are really that tier-two support. They pull students out and work on them in small groups and one-on-one, and again, with specific identified gaps in skills that they have. They also go into the, they go into classrooms and service a whole class. They help co-teach classes at times, which is provide this overall level of support. So, having those positions are really, really critical for us to be able to service our SRBI tier-two interventions, but also just really continue to work on building and closing those gaps that we've seen with students over the last few years with ELA and math-specific skills.
And at the high school, I talked a little bit about it, just with our Montauk marbles, they're able to provide support in all academic areas. It's kind of a unique trait that the three of them possess. I don't know how they know so much about so many different things, or so many different topics, but we are fortunate to have them. And on any given day, they approximately service about 60 students, and that's not including our focus study hall. Last semester, we had 76 students enrolled in our focus study hall program. This semester, we have 72 students. So outside of the 60 students that are serviced by a student support center, we also have those students in the focus study hall programs. Also, as I mentioned, Rich does an amazing job of providing push-in support to classes of, you know, particularly math, but in really any subject area, to provide that additional support in real time to students in need, which is also a great thing. And then, should we have students that need credit recovery options for a variety of reasons, they also can facilitate some of that work in the student support center. They also serve as an assistance to students who require alternate test locations for a particular testing, and they really are a, kind of a go-to, and students seek them out for a lot of SEO support as well.
I just want to point out that last bullet on the first section two, when you look at transient population, that stat of only 50% of current grade six students attended Montauk public schools K through 5, is pretty remarkable. And, you know, I like to think students are moving into the district because of our schools. But we do have, you know, students that need to make up some areas and really work on that when we do get them. And the tutoring, again, helps attack the specific skills that are identified with students that have those. And then, you know, the trickle-down effect is more, they come to school more often, they feel more connected to school, they're finding these small successes, they're feeling more proud of their work. So we see increase in attendance, we see lower discipline referrals, we see higher engagement in class. So all of those are just critical things that these tutoring positions, they do for students, just to help students who are struggling academically find a place.
One thing they've talked about is SRBI. That's scientific research-based interventions for students, or now it's also, I think they're changing the name to MTSS, multi-tiered systems of support. Districts have in place, and I think most districts do this, Montauk's had it for a long time, a system by which we take a look at students in a regular meeting schedule, as the teams might meet every six weeks. They look at students at a grade level or in class sections and say, which of these students do we think need more than tier-one support? Tier-one support being you're part of the regular classroom. And then they identify students who need tier-two supports. That's where, if we didn't have the tutoring centers, we wouldn't have the ability to provide tier-two supports. Tier-three supports is where you start to move into identification for special ed, and we have those service providers. But at a secondary level, we don't have providers of tier-two supports like we do at the elementary, where we have reading paras that work with students and math paras that work with students. So this is, this is that support system. Without it, we would lose it.
And it is reducing our number of referrals to special education.
Believe it or not, it would be high.
Definitely.
And I was motivated to do the math, to look at the transancy of our population, because one thing I ask myself, and I'm sure you're asking yourself, is, you know, well, if you're doing that great job at elementary school, and you've got those teachers, and you're starting to close the gap, then why do you still need all these interventions in the middle school or the high school? And when I answered one of the reading coaches, she said, because those weren't our students. And I said, really? How many? And so I took a look, and in our 12th grade classes, only 20% of our graduating students went through Montauk schools from K to 12. So we have a more transient population than we had in the past, and students are coming in with gaps for whatever reasons, and, you know, we may not yet have had the time to address them. They're in the middle school or the high school, we still need to do that. They can't access, as you know, particularly pick something that's really sequential like math, if you don't have this skill, you can't do that. Our teachers work hard to differentiate in the classroom, but if you're differentiating for, you know, gaps, this why, one person can't do that.
So, if I may say, what's important about this, when we sell this very lean budget to the town, it's important to note that it's, we're getting five tutors for about 23 grand apiece. You want to talk about getting bang for the buck, I mean, that's a really, just listening to you guys talk and what Superintendent's presenting, really establishes how great $115,000 is supporting the education of these children. I mean, that's a hard one to argue, so thank you for explaining it, thank you for supporting it, and I do support it.
And lastly, is that board-certified behavior analyst, Dan Paula?
Yep. So, as you all know, I think I, earlier in the year, I shared the special programs we have throughout the district. We have two actually in almost all our schools. They're, one's supporting the social-emotional students, and the other for the intellectually disabled and autism spectrum students. These programs are supported through a BCBA. We currently contract out for that BCBA. The role of the BCBA is to support staff and students by providing guidance, structure, functional behavior assessments, behavior intervention plans for those students struggling with the most significant self-regulation needs. The BCBA also provides support with data keeping, monitoring and adjusting the behavior intervention plan that is developed off of the FBA. Training staff on the implementation of these plans, along with training them on data keeping. The BCBA will then take all that data and analyze it and adjust the plan accordingly. So there's a lot to the role of a BCBA. We currently contract for two days per week for approximately $51,000. She currently has a caseload of 26 students with a backlog of five FBAs. Those are functional behavior assessments. This backlog is directly, you know, impacts the ability for us to appropriately address the needs of our students in an appropriate timely manner. Backlog because she's only here two days a week. We can significantly enhance our capacity to provide timely and comprehensive support to our students and staff by hiring our own full-time BCBA. The cost is approximately $85,000, plus if they take benefits, then you're looking at 100 and, about $111,000, depending on the plan that they take. That's still less than one outplaced child. So, I just want to remind you of that. This would not only reduce the backlog of assessments, but also streamline the process, completing FBAs within five to six weeks, as compared to, it takes her about six to nine weeks to complete one now because she's only here, you know, two days. So hiring our own would mean quicker interventions and support strategies, ultimately benefiting all stakeholders and the academic success of our students. Equally as important, a full-time BCBA would be able to, would allow for greater flexibility and availability to collaborate with staff, parents, and administrators, ensuring that interventions are effectively implemented and monitored across all settings in real time. I am aware the cost of this BCBA would be twice as what we are currently paying. However, we will benefit from three-fifths more time with this BCA, this service. We will have this person at our disposal for real-time support and crisis interventions. It will be able to provide professional development opportunities to our staff as we deem appropriate. We don't have that right now, that's an additional cost. It will also allow us to hire registered behavior technicians as we need to. These are behaviorists, but they need to work under a BCBA. So we looked at trying to hire some, but we couldn't because we didn't have our own BCBA.
And we did ask them, we could do that and work under the consultant BCBA, and they said no.
Yeah, right. Having a full-time district BCBA would foster a culture of proactive support and continuous improvement, leading to better outcomes for all our students, particularly those with the most significant needs. With the increased mental health and behavioral challenges we see across the district and across everywhere, the state, the country, I believe the impact of this investment will be felt not only in the immediate future, but also in the growth of our students for years ahead. So, I, you know, in my humble opinion, I think this budgetary item should remain in the budget.
And I've assigned a double insurance plan to that person, if they took a waiver, it would be the 85. Oh, we got that 85,000, I was at a superintendent's meeting, asked people what they paid their BCBA, and basically they said they're, you know, paid pretty much commensurate with the teacher's contract in terms of the benefit package, and the range from 80 to 90,000 dollars, so I think so.
But, you know, when you look at having a BCBA service the entire district, they're going from school to school. So, that's a lot. And we really streamlined this one that we have now just for our special programs, and she's completely tapped out. She's just not getting, she's not getting through the preschool program enough, she's not, she's not being able to, you know, complete these functional assessments within a reasonable timeframe.
I have a question.
Sure.
So you mentioned technicians, and I sent a red flag. What are these technicians?
They're called, I don't know why they're called technicians either, they're called RBTs, registered behavior technicians. It's just the name they've given them. Now, they are trained like a BCBA, but they just don't, they're not, they don't have that level of training and experience. So, they are able to really implement discreet trial, they are trained in, you know, ABA, and in data keeping and intervention plans and...
So are we, are you asking for that or suggesting?
No, I'm not asking for that. I'm saying that if we had our own BCBA, it would give us the ability to do that, come down the road, say, you know, we, instead of hiring a behaviorist, we could have somebody that's much more trained and skilled.
Well, I'll give you the, I'll give you the example. We're looking at an outplacement right now that if we... that if we could put an RBT one-on-one with that student, might not be an outplacement.
How much are those people?
You know, that's a good question, I think about forty thousand, forty-five thousand a year.
But that's not something we're asking for right now.
But we're not asking for it, it would just allow us to have that, like Lori said. If we were in a position like, that we were looking at an outplacement and we had the ability to hire an RBT, it's a third of the cost, because like I said, an outplacement is approximately a hundred thousand, but then you add transportation, that's another forty-five thousand.
I fully understand the business model, I just want the board to be prepared that were the case.
Yeah, no, I'm not asking for RBTs, but it does give us that.
It gives us, thank you, thank you.
So when we outplace a student and they go to a facility, they're working with an RBT under a BCBA at that facility?
Correct.
So that is the end of our request for increases to the budget. So this is where we get to the grand total, I've got two totals for you. I am recommending a budget overall that is, takes that rollover budget, adds 245,000 to it, and it ends at 45,465,616. You can see the total increase is just about $2 million. That is 4.39% above our budget this year. Well, the appropriation this year, not our actual expenditures. I've put down below here, in the worst-case scenario, if that magnet tuition thing doesn't work out, this is what the numbers would look like. At this moment, Kathy and I are going out on a limb and saying our legislators are going to make good on their commitment and we are presenting this for this year.
What's that?
Questions on that?
It's important to be accurate, I'm sorry, it's important to be accurate legislators, so we can to help them to support what they had promised the districts, because the more they care for people, the more likely they are to support them. So we have contact? It'd be great to start that.
I'll forward you all an email tonight about calls you could make tomorrow, because tomorrow's a big day for this. Questions on this? Just want to take a second to just recap where we are with that ARPA-ESR money. So, right now, this is in terms of staff, what was in the ARPA-ESR grant. And I put the tutors at 4.5, there's five bodies, but they're not all full-time, so it's a little under five. And then we also have services in the ARPA-ESR grant. So the way that that grant is going to be used moving forward, I should say to you, I have been extremely cautious about spending the ARPA-ESR grant this year because I knew there were a couple really big expenses coming up. So we've been, you know, we budgeted these things, we're pulling out of the grant to meet these commitments, but we will end the year at the end of June with money still in that ARPA-ESR grant. And that's very, very purposeful. Every once in a while, the state will have a meeting saying, we need people to spend their money because they're afraid some districts won't spend it. And I'm saying, we've got a plan for more than all of it, but I just want to, you know, wait and see what we can do with it. So, things that are not in the budget, that would be if we didn't have the ARPA-ESR grant, first let me just explain to you, the ARPA-ESR grant has to be obligated by September 2024, so that's this coming September. After that time, we can no longer pay for any salaries or district staff. We can, however, obligate for a service. That would be a consultant service, an online license, anything that we can cut a PO and liquidate later. So after September 2024, you don't have to stop spending the ARPA-ESR grant, we just have to obligate all of it. Actually, I think we'll probably have spent it all, honestly, because looking at our needs here. We have not put into the budget replacement of our one-to-one devices. Those one-to-one devices, we started handing out in 2019, 2020. The ones that we handed out, you know, the first batch, were ones that existed in the district before that time, when, you know, when we first went home, we were just giving them everything we had. And we're not going to be able to keep that one-to-one program if we don't replace that. So we're proposing 500 Chromebooks would come from the one-to-one, for the one-to-one program from the grant at about $175,000. That would be the middle school replacement. And those middle school Chromebooks are limping along right now. They're repairing them constantly, they're soldering and gluing wires together, so that's necessity. The iPads are our one-to-one device in PK to two. We've decided we won't continue to use them in PK, but in K to two, the teachers use them quite a lot. They're really easy for the students to use, they've got a lot of educational apps that they use with students on there. And we would do that replacement through the ARPA-ESR grant at the end of the year. The reading program is a bit of a problem. We're starting to get quotes for reading programs that we might be interested in putting in place, and they are ridiculous. So first, I was going to put it in my, this is my comments at the end of the meeting, I'll make them now. Will's and I received a letter from the commissioner on Friday. Those letters usually come at about five o'clock on Friday, and it was right on time, saying that there actually was not in the legislation any process for reconsidering of waivers, and there would be no reconsideration of our waiver, it is what it is, we need to change our program completely. So, we need to change our program completely. And we have started to get quotes from programs that we think would be potentially suitable. $595,000 for year one, that's just grades K to two. Another $607,000 year two, that gets us three to five. And $140,000 every year after to replace. That's much more than we have spent on a reading program in the past. We've got $82,000, the state's appropriated to us in the Right to Read Grant. We have the ARPA-ESR grant. I do anticipate this budget will end with some year-end money that we could put towards this. That's because of the savings we have in staff, the savings we have in MERS. We've gone through, you know, as you take a look and you'll see in your binder, places where we are projecting some savings. Through all of those things, I'm hoping we can cobble together close to 500,000. And of course, we'll work with the reps and say, yeah, we're not paying that. So what are we going to have to pare off of it, and what's the best price you can give me? I did communicate immediately with the state, saying, we need your help in paying for this. They called me back Monday, I said, that was yesterday, Monday, and said, there actually isn't any money, so they can help us with some logistics of making choices. We are speaking to other programs, getting prices for those, but what I'm hearing from other superintendents is this is what it's going to cost. So, well, thank goodness we have the money to apply towards it, but it's going to be a heavy lift. We're looking at science program adoption at TYLE, that's something that is sorely needed, they're piloting right now. Before I understood how much this was, I was like, yeah, we'll take a hundred for that, a hundred for this, but anyway. Hoping that we can do that through ARPA-ESR. If there's money left, we will continue to maintain electronic licenses. We can continue the Project Courage social worker, because that's someone we're paying as a consultant, not a staff member. So those are things that could stay in the grant next year as long as the money lasts. But as you can see, as Kathy will tell you, I don't have a lot of truth. If you say to me, you've got this much money left, I'm pretty good if you're going to know how to spend that money. But these are all really important things, that the Chromebook and iPad and the reading program would all be in the budget if we didn't have that grant. Okay, so that's the explanation of the budget. We're going to take a little break while we give you a budget binder, and then, especially for our new board members, just walk you through the parts of that budget binder and how to read it, because next week we'll answer all your questions about that. Okay, so what's in this budget binder and how do you read it? If you take a look at the budget binder, when you open that up, the first thing you're going to see is that PowerPoint. So if you draw anything that we shared with you, that PowerPoint is there. Right after that, there's an orange tab that takes you to the board strategies relating to our district goals. Obviously, you want to make sure that we have a budget in place that enables us to support the strategies that you committed to and the goals that you have developed. Good? What are we missing?
Probably. Counselor, you can.
Oh, just grab one of the other counselors.
Looking over there, I don't see a white. Counselor, you can.
Sorry, thank you. I appreciate you being here so much, I can't tell you how important it is that you hear this and understand it, so it's awesome. Then the next thing in the binder is what I projected here, and that's the budget code explanation. Our budget is governed by a series of codes that you'll see for every item in the budget. And if you're wondering what those codes mean, they're here. These codes are not, Kathy didn't invent these, these are like the standard accounting codes for our budget. But you will see that for each of the things that is in the budget, there's a code that has this many digits, and each set of digit means something. So the first, the first is the general form, that O one, they all are. For the next three, talk about the object. And you'll see a report in here in a minute that separates the budget by object. So you see what exactly are you paying for certified staff? What exactly are you paying for non-certified staff, which is basically everyone except monitors, tutors and paras? That would be bus drivers, nurses, custodians, they're all in that non-certified support. And then you can see other salary objects. As you go through, you'll see there are a lot of objects that are not salaries. Okay, supplies and services, et cetera. So that, it will just help you as you're navigating the budget to look back at that and say, what exactly am I looking at? All those codes are here. After that, you'll come to a section that's called Budget Summaries. And this is, I think, the place that's going to be really helpful to you. The first budget summary there is an object summary. And that's where you can see, what did we budget this year for certified staff, for non-certified staff, for et cetera? What are we projecting we'll expend this year? Those are not, don't hold us to those. Those are, some of them we've adjusted, some of them we haven't. What Kathy will do a lot of times with the salaries is say, okay, let's take a look at bus drivers, that's kind of like paras, a valid little group. What have we spent so far this year? It's been this many months, we're three-fifths through the year, what's the next two-fifths going to be? Or whatever it is, and we try to project those out, but those have not all been adjusted. And then the last column is what we're asking for next year. So you're saying, but where are you getting those numbers from? If you go a little bit further, back in this same tab, you will see another orange sheet of paper. And after that orange sheet, it says Object Summary Explanation. It looks like this. And here, we have written for you an explanation for every single object. So this is where you would see the explanation for, what are the changes to certified staff? Exactly why is this number what it is? Why is this number that we project will end the year for certified staff lower than the number that we budgeted for certified staff? It's all explained in that text. It also bolded in that text, every place where you've got an ARPA-ESR grant person entering the budget. So you can see that. I think this is probably the most helpful document in the budget binder to help you really understand what the changes all are. It's not that long, and if we, if we try to prove it a lot of times, there's a lot there, so I apologize if it's filling typos in it. And I want you, if you would, to turn to the very last page of that. The very last page of that, you will see... You will see that we've made an adjustment. After we went to print all weekend, we noticed that there was a mistake that was $41,000 in certified staff. So, all of the slides I showed you are corrected, the presentation adjusted, the documents, these two documents that I'm going to share with you that summarize the budget, we corrected just at the bottom. So if you look at that very last page, you'll see a place where it says correction for certified staff, and we subtracted $41,000. Make sense to everyone?
I can't find that sheet.
It's a little bit.
It's this last page?
Yeah.
I was looking for it to look just like that.
Well, the first page looks just like that.
I got it.
So this is a document where you see that adjustment to that. Good? All right. The next section, after you've finished that object summary, is the more detailed operating budget. And for that, I've made you an index that I think is also helpful, which looks like this. And if you just went through and understood the budget by object, now you'll see those objects broken out by function. So for example, for certified staff, some of them are regular ed teachers, some of them are special ed teachers, some of them are guidance or council counselors, some of them are administrators. So you will see, for certified staff, where are they? How are they broken down and how are they used? The detail of the budget follows this, and this notes the page where you'll find those in the budget, so you can see exactly how much each of those things are. So this is basically an index to the document that follows it. But again, it helps you just understand within each of the big objects, because those are large buckets, how do we break those down further by function? And each of those functions, of course, has a number as well, which you can see in that budget book there. And then the last piece in that section is this detailed budget by function. Questions on the binder? So we're not going to go through this anymore tonight. Before we meet next time, this is your guidance to take a look, see what questions you have. In our next meeting, we'll go through anything you want in here, answer any questions. And we can talk about, and think about, are there, you know, as we start to play with this budget and look at it, what do you want to change? Are there things you want to add, things you want to delete, things you don't understand? That will be the subject of the next meeting.
What about the capital plan?
Yeah, so then, next meeting. Her job was to make me not forget the last part. So next meeting, we'll address questions, provide additional support, discuss any suggestions you have, anything you want to change in the operating plan and in the capital plan. And last board meeting, we threw the capital plan, where we do have a couple things to direct your attention to. Can I ask you, though, to do this one thing? Board and town, if you have questions, would you just email us or give us a call prior to the meeting? Because this is a lot, and we'd love to be able to dig into it and get to a really good answer rather than say, ooh, I mean Kathy's got a binder this thick, and we know a lot of it, but we don't want to scramble through pages of that at the meeting. So as you look at it, and also, I would be happy to, Kathy and I both would be happy to sit down at any moment, go through it with you, if you want to make an appointment and say, especially new board members. I remember the first time I was a board member and I saw a budget, I don't know what this is. So just sit down with us and, you know, we'd be happy to explain it more. But we really want you to understand it, because if you don't understand it, you can't support it. Or make a decision of, you know, we don't think we can pass that increase to the town, and we need to start talking about costs, or whatever. Okay, so the capital plan, that's the last section in the binder? The, oh, the section I skipped is the more detailed, there's a place where it says recommendations, that has a lot more detail about those additions to the budget. And everyone did a lot of homework to really try and get as much information to you as they could. The capital plan is the last page. If you remember, when I presented the capital plan to you a month ago, month and a half, I guess, I said, the one thing we don't have is the RUIF study. So now we have the RUIF study. I have loaded into the board materials all the documents from the RUIF study, if you want to take a look at them. But I want to explain to you how that's impacted the capital plan. First thing, we got some good news. We had in the capital plan for the last couple years... We had in the capital plan for the last couple years, the replacement of our door access system, and that was a significant cost, 150, Kathy, was it? I'm trying to remember. About 150. We have removed that from the capital plan. Nick finally found the right person who said to us, oh no, we can still get you the cards you need to update your system. It's not, we've been told it was obsolete and we couldn't replace it, but we can. And that's a far better thing to do than talk about replacing the whole door access system. So we've removed that request from the capital plan. What we've put in is the roof study request. So our buildings all have, and take tile out of this, because we're already replacing the tile roof, but the rest of our buildings all have sections of roof that have been replaced in the last, within the last 20 years, and sections of roof that have not. And we commissioned a roof study to have someone take a look at all of those roofs and make a recommendation for us about how do we deal with those sections of the roof that are much older, and what would it cost to replace those pieces. So for each of the five buildings, we have those roof study documents loaded for you, but in the capital plan, you'll see quick descriptions for those. We put the Palmer roof replacement in next year instead of the door access system. And the reason we put the Palmer roof replacement in next year is for two reasons. One, I went to the finance committee and asked them to please hold on our ARPA funding, which was to replace the Palmer skylights, because it didn't make any sense to replace the Palmer skylights if we're replacing the roof, and because the Palmer skylights' cost would be way more than was allocated in the ARPA grant, so our thought is, let's just put a roof there. The skylights are on the third floor, you can't see them from the road, we have no glasses up there, but there's, we have some leaking problems. So Palmer's are least sound roof. It has some, some money that we need to commit quickly through the ARPA fund, as long as the town will still let us use it and apply about the skylights to the roof, and we would obviously need additional funding for that. The problem with Palmer is we have tenants in the third floor, that is the masons, and because of that, we're not eligible for the same reimbursement from the state for school construction grants as we are for our other schools. So our, the town's cost of that roof replacement is higher than it would be if it was reimbursed at the rate of something that was fully used for a school. But at any rate, we put that in for this next year, that's the rationale for why. I know Joe was here last time and talking about the leaking at Palmer. We're doing a good job in patching and mitigating the leak problems, but there's, there's definitely some water damage there. All of the other roof projects, we put out to year four, year five of the capital plan, but wanted the town to be aware they're there and what the cost would look like for those. I'm not saying for sure they need to be done in year four or five. Right now, those roofs are, are doing well, we're able to maintain them and repair them, and we don't have active leaks where, I said to Billy, he's new on the job, like, Billy, we're not getting leaks right now, do we? And we realize it's gonna rain tomorrow, so stay tuned to the next meeting, but, you know, safely thinking that we don't need to do anything with that, except be aware that sooner or later, roofs that are over 20 years old need to be replaced. So that's the changes to the capital plan from what I presented to you before. And again, next meeting, ultimately, our goal is through a series of budget workshops to get to a place where the board approves a budget in the capital plan and send it to the town. Any other questions? There's a lot to talk, I promise not to do any reporting on that.
So on behalf of the board, I'm gonna say, I thank very much Superintendent. Obviously, you and your staff have taken a tremendous amount of time, put together a very impressive budget. I don't like to compare ourselves to other towns, because we are unique, all districts are unique, I've learned this over the years, but to say that we can present a budget with this kind of increase, I say is commendable to the administration and staff, so board, I think we should be pretty proud of what we saw. Obviously, we'll have discussions about it going forward, but very nice job, thank you very much.
And I thank Kathy hugely for all her work in this, as well as the admin team, we've all had a heart in thinking it through, but Kathy's obviously done a lot and shared the work with me together. I was talking to her.
All right, citizens' comments, agenda items only. Any citizens' comments, agenda items only? Again, any citizens' comments, agenda items only? All right. All right, letters and combinations? I have none. Thank you. Approval of the consent calendar? Do you have motion?
No.
Can you explain for the new members what the consent calendar is?
Thank you, I was about to ask.
So what the board decided sometime long before me is that it's efficient to bundle together certain routine items that need board approval every month, and that bundle is called the consent calendar, or consent agenda, and it includes minutes from any meetings that were held in the prior month, as well as Kathy's budget reports. So they're loaded in your board documents, you can look at all of them. If you ever want to pull one out, we can approve it, but say, I wanna pull out these minutes, because, for example, you might say, it says I made that motion and I didn't, or, you know, reflects a comment I made that I didn't make. So you certainly at any time to pull an item, signal an item out, or, no, I don't, we wanna approve the consent calendar, but not the minutes from this meeting. Or you could always say, Kathy, I don't understand why a check was written to blah, blah, blah for this much money. So, you know, but, but by, in large part, they're routine approvals, so they just bundle together rather than have a bunch of motions.
Thank you.
And our fiscal one is a monthly one, so we don't report it to the board until we actually balance with the town, because it used to be that we had to get approval for purchase orders, but we said you could fire it, but once we do the commitment for a purchase order, we're committed to make the check. But, I mean, so, once we do that, we balance with the town, and then we submit it for the board to show what we have spent the money on, so anybody can ask any questions at that point, and we would do the documentation needed.
And again, if you had a question like that, if you asked it before the meeting, it would be really helpful, because that might take a little bit of data.
All right. Old business, consideration and action.
Yes.
Excuse me. Thank you.
We sidetracked you.
Nope, that's fine, no, that was an excellent question, thank you very much, thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions, hearing none, motion passes, thank you, board. Yeah, old business. Consideration and action to approve the specifications and drawings submitted by Chikinsky Humes Architects LLC for the tile re-roofing and related work. Superintendent?
We have three motions in a row here that are related to the tile roof project. We're in the final stages of preparing the documents and submitting them to the state so that we can go out to bid, which is really important that we get out to bid, because this is summer work for us. So this is the first of those, this is the specifications and drawings that are loaded in your board docs.
Second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions, hearing none? Motion passes, thank you, board. Consideration and action to approve the tile re-roofing and related budget cost estimate submitted by Chikinsky Humes Architects LLC in the amount of $3,505,666.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions, hearing none, motion passes, thank you. Consideration and action to authorize Superintendent Lori Powell and Board Chair Will Spite to sign the Department of Administration's services from school construction grants dash zero four two to request a review of the final plans that have been submitted, Chikinsky, by Chikinsky Humes Architects LLC, for the tile re-roofing and related work.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions, hearing none, thank you. Consideration and action to approve the proposed educator diversity plan as presented to the E and E committee. Superintendent?
I'll, with discussion at the E and E meeting tonight, and it's a short turnaround, normally you would do something at E and E and then make it for the next board meeting, but unfortunately, the state took a while to get the template out, and they want it in by the 15th, which is before the next meeting. So that's why it has to be brought to your attention now, and I'll allow Diane to explain a little bit about it.
So the state is requiring all districts to put together a educator diversity plan, action plan, and it is to focus on what each district will do to recruit, hire, select and hire, and retain educators of color. And so we talked about the demographics in our district, and how important it would be that our educators reflect the diversity that our students have. So the state is requiring that you put together a plan, and you upload it to your website and share it with them by March 15th, with the understanding that you can make improvements and changes as you come across them and as they make you feedback.
Any questions? Further questions?
Yes.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions, hearing none? Motion passes, thank you. New business, establishment of dates for BOE.
One more E.
Consideration and action to transfer $56,100 from object 111-130 salary to object 423/2130, nursing subcontracted services, to account for a contract for nursing, because we were unable to hire...
For the vacant.
To, for the vacant position. Thank you.
I'll make the motion.
Any discussion? I think it's very self-explanatory, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Thank you very much. New business, establishment of dates for BOE budget workshops, March 5th and March 12th at 5:00 PM. Does that work for the board?
Typically, what we've done in the past is take a couple workshops where we meet at 5:00, all we do is talk about the budget, answer questions, and then by the regular board meeting on the 3rd, 3rd Tuesday in March, hopefully we'd be ready to send a budget to the town. And if we don't need all of those meetings, then we don't have to have a lot, but certainly we need at least one.
I'll make the motion.
A second. Any discussion? You guys are looking at your phones, does it work for you, Tim?
It works.
Erica, does it work for you?
I think so, yeah.
Our boss, has that in question? She, but it's a nonchalant, not quite a crazy long, as it would be, and it certainly helps to put in questions ahead of time.
Are you guys talking about, about how long are the meetings?
An hour, hour and a half, maybe.
So, no more than two?
No.
No. Yes, fine.
I would have to leave early, of course, for me, but I can, I'm more scared.
Yeah, and it, it totally depends on how many questions you have, and, you know, the more you ask us ahead, the easier it is for us to go through.
All right, do we have a motion for this?
Uh huh.
Second, needs further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions, hearing none? Motion passes, thank you. Okay. Any liaison reports? No meeting, thank you. Education evaluation, we just discussed that.
Well, we actually had two, there will be one, we're gonna be bringing to you at the next meeting, it's a module careers pathways, very informative presentation, and we'll bring it to the full board next month.
And that's not something to approve, it's simply a program in place, informational, because the board had asked about it.
Okay, communications committee?
If there was no...
No meeting. Motville Education Foundation?
One of the town counselors, Kevin Pleitrop, attended that meeting, volunteered to join the group, and also volunteered to hold a, on treaty of fundraising event for them, so that was a highlight of the night.
Nice.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Lard?
Basically, doing the same thing we're doing here, it's in the middle of the year, working through our agenda and our budget. The biggest thing is that we're now halfway through the, call it a divorce from Goodwin University. Lard had been running the magnet schools up at Goodwin University, East Hartford, and they're finally got approval to become an ally themselves, so now they're taking over. So we're just about done with moving the certified staff, moving all the requirements out, so that's been a big thing.
Thank you. CAVE NSBA?
Yes, I believe that all of you have an email from Gail Heath from CAVE that outlines the various committee meetings that are coming up at the legislature that impact things that may bear on how things go for schools. The biggest one, of course, is tomorrow, as Lori pointed out, and our legislators certainly can benefit from hearing from us, and it does make a difference. Here in Motville, as you know, we have two state senators and three state representatives, and if they are all hearing from us, that, you know, that's helpful. The other thing that's coming up in March on the 13th is the CAVE Day on the Hill, this is a day where we go up, we spend, eat and watch now in the morning, we go over, we talk to legislators about matters of concern to us.
What's it due on?
March 13th. And you should have that, at the bottom of that same email from Gail Heath, it's listed in there, and there's a link to register to go. So I would encourage people to, at the minimum, scroll through that advocacy email, there are a lot of good links there, you can sign up electronically to testify if you so choose. And I think it's a lottery system, but the good news is that the hearing tomorrow is not starting at 5:00 PM, it's actually in the middle of the day. So it might be over at a time that's suitable for humans. And that's all I've got.
Thank you. Monthly Youth Service Bureau? No meeting, first week, it'll be next month. Thank you. Board rep?
Even the more chilly recently, the temperature's been lower, me and some others from the tennis team have been practicing, you know, courts, and we're very excited for the season coming up, especially because the courts have been finished now, they're, our home matches aren't on those courts, because they still need to be finished, they're still very slippery, but I think the finishing of them has definitely made us pretty inspired to start. And the drama, the drama department is having their musical, The Addams Family, which is showing March, March 6th through the 9th, at what time?
7:00 PM.
7:00 PM, so I recommend you all mark your calendars for that. And Soon Government has also been working hard on the winter temperality and spirit week, which is going on right now. And Soon Government is also having a blood drive tomorrow, which I'll also be helping with. And last week, we had a meeting where a representative from the organization that plans the blood drive in the area came and talked to us, and hearing what he had to say, had to say was very, very good to hear, it feels nice to be part of something like this, that can definitely help a lot of people and save a lot of lives. And Alexa wasn't able to make it tonight, but she did send me a snippet of what she had, sorry, back for her. Indoor track competed at ECCs, and in addition to four individual championships, the girls won the ECC Divisional Championship. Indoor track also sent nearly 30 athletes to the Class S State Championships, losing several events. Wrestling team had two athletes become ECC's champions in their weight class, and then move on to win the Class S State Championships as well, taking a quick, quick re, re... Taking a quick, quick revisit back to the fall season, during halftime of basketball games, Boozer's Club had announced fall sports championship teams, doing volleyball, boys' soccer, and boys', boys' cross country, and presented athlete, athletes, t-shirts to commemorate their accomplishments. Tile also had an eventual return from winter break on February ninth, the seventh grade class endured in the evening, was socializing at the Stone Lake Dance put on by the VTO. The path of this program led by teacher Mr. Tim Leinberg, who is continuing their weekly field trips to Waterford Country School. Students find these, these trips valuable with the opportunities to interact with animals, compete, complete team building activities, and work on their personal program. Advisor, Ms. Cindy Gravalo, and the teacher committee reviewed applications for the tile chapter of the National Junior Honor Society this past month, and are proud to announce that thirteen students will be inducted into NJHS on March fourteenth.
Thank you, I just wanted, did you say the tech, the tech's courts, where you play in your home games?
Our home games are at Erie Park, I believe, the, the courts we have right now are still, like, don't have like a finished.
Right, I just wanna make sure we're on the same page on that.
Yeah.
They're gonna be very nice when they're done, very, very nice. Thank you. Uh, principals?
I know Adam spoke, I'll just put another plug for our musical, March sixth, seventh, eighth, and ninth, seven P. M. Um, two Walsh and company have always put on a great show, we're really looking forward to it.
And as Adam said, the, um, National Junior Honor Society, we are inducting thirteen students this coming Monday, March fourth, and that's at five o'clock, and the board is invited to that, um, it's not a long induction ceremony, but it's really nice, and we're proud of our students for that, and, um, I'm sure the high school musical production's gonna be great, we have Neres Poppins on March twenty-first and twenty-second, and I think it's gonna be pretty nice.
My favorite movie of all time.
There you go.
On behalf of the three elementarys, I just wanted to mention we're coming up on the end of our second trimester, which is while the break is, that is all about, our report cards, we pushed them out a little bit because the Sundays are a little long and it's bigger than Thursday, um, and also we're kicking off all the elementarys a little sooner, kicking off the Read to Write program, which we're, then, um, is their, a group of people that got together and believe in, um, improvement in the body and the mind, so they encourage students to read, and then at the end, the students, um, you know, earn coupons for their reading to, for K to two students, they give away a bike per two, per grade level for K to two, and then, um, hundred dollar gift cards to decks for the three students, so, so, you're super excited about that.
One last thing, I guess, I just, sorry if I jumped on anything, Amanda and Ken reminded me, our unified basketball team is traveling to NFA next Tuesday, um, for their kind of annual, um, big basketball tournament there, and actually, I think it was the day last year? Yeah, the day covered it last year, it was a real nice event, so they're going back again this year.
Good, okay, thank you.
Spring's coming.
Spring's coming, okay.
Spring is a busy time of year for us, not that any other time of year is not busy, but spring seems to kick it up a notch, um, particularly for my special ed staff, my supervisors, they begin, um, scheduling transition PPTs for the fifth grade students that are going to sixth grade. These PPTs continued throughout the rest of the year, um, so that the IEP will reflect what the students', uh, program will look like when they enter sixth grade. This is also a nice opportunity for parents to get acquainted with the special ed staff at Tile, and, um, ask any questions, and be collaborative in the transition process. Equally as, as busy is the preschool team, they are working on birth to three referrals in preparation for next year, um, and they are also preparing for the preschool screening, which is March twentieth, and they, all the slots are full. So now that, that, that'll be a busy time, um, also now that they have a full-time social worker, she has begun doing social skills lessons throughout the whole school, but she's, um, gotta focus on the, uh, preschool group, um, she is utilizing the ruler train, uh, ruler program, um, they have preschool lessons focused on understanding their feelings, and, you know, red is angry, and, um, yellow, I think is happy, or whatever, different colors for different feelings. The, the lessons are short, and they're, they're very appropriate, so she's using that, and we're using that program, I think, as you know, throughout the district. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Yes?
Yes, um, so we just finished our state mandated, um, multilingual testing, um, that's required, that we give to all our English language learners. I just wanna mention that we're really excited, we put a focus on our middle school students this year, um, and we've had some students that have been there for a couple of years with marginal growth on the Lost Links, and all the students we're watching, um, made improvement, so, and I just wanna thank Jess and Greg, because they got really involved with our district coordinator, incentivized, talking to all the students ahead of time, stressed how important it was, and we think it really made a difference, um, must've been the lunch they had with you, or whatever, but we're excited, it looks promising, um, you know, March begins the testing window for, you know, all the testing we have to do for the state, um, besides the Lost Links. Uh, and then lastly, I just wanna share, uh, this Thursday, no, it's next Thursday, March seventh, Bohegan is hosting, um, their first family SCL night, and I'm really excited because that was put on by our social worker and a first grade teacher, I believe, and they invited several, you know, all the families to come, they're going to walk in and get a passport that you get stamped as you go to each station, and they're going to be doing ruler activities, um, they're going to also do yoga, meditation, some coloring, and they'll also have some tables there for family engagement, um, information about attendance and participating in your child's education, and lastly, they'll have a raffle, free raffle, that they created, um, large raffle prizes and baskets all around, things you could do with your family, such as a game night basket, a wellness basket, a movie night basket, a breakfast basket, and a baking basket. So I'm really excited, good job, because I think getting the families into the school is really important, so. That's it.
Thank you, Superintendent?
Um, I want to inform you of a change in our PD date, we were supposed to have a full day of PD on March eighth, I received on Friday an email from Jeff Rogers as registrar for voters stating that they needed Bohegan and, um, obviously, Pharaohs for the primary elections, which are on April second, um, so, given that, I think that attendance at the primary elections might be quite high, I'm not comfortable with having students in that building, and particularly around the parking area, because that was tricky for the referendum, but that wasn't, you know, that well attended, for this, I think would be very difficult. Um, so I will put something out, I just wanted to tell you first to families and staff tomorrow, it doesn't change the calendar, it just changes, the eighth would have been teachers only, now this April second will be teachers only, and students will come to school on March eighth, so hopefully, um, logistics of childcare won't be a big monkey wrench, it is a little bit of a monkey wrench for some of the people they have planned, but we'll, uh, make that change. And, um, Nick has been working over the last, uh, couple days on improving access to dispatchers to all our school cameras, that's something we think is really important for school safety, and he was down there today, um, working on training with them, he'll be back tomorrow, so that they can, uh, as they, they know what every camera is, what they're seeing, where it is, and then they will also do some tours of the school so that they can understand and visualize. We have already, working with the police, them going into schools as first responders, but the dispatcher sitting looking at the cameras needs to understand how the school's laid out as well, so that if they get a nine-one-one call, they can say it's, you know, go here. Uh, so he's working on that. And just to say, Willie is off to a fantastic start as our new director of facilities, he's listening carefully, he's quickly adjusting to the new position, um, he's been a great resource in trying to figure out this HVAC thing that you saw tonight, that all came from him, so, really, I'm glad that you brought it to you.
Lori, did you say March second?
It was supposed to be March eighth, it will be April second.
Oh, you find that. Yeah.
That's right. That's right. That's it.
Thank you. Alright, any citizens' comments? Any citizens' comments? Any citizens' comments? I'm gonna keep my remarks brief, I wanna tell you that I attended a unified basketball game, and, you know, there's a lot of things in life that we take for granted, it was the best forty minutes, I spent quite a long time, a lot of teamwork, respect, friendship, very, people just being vulnerable and having a good time, having fun, I mean, I gotta tell ya, if you look at the world we live in today, that was really pleasant to watch, and it was pleasant to watch, 'cause a lot of that that was happening on that basketball court was because of what we do with this school system, and you should all be very proud, administration should be very proud of that. I get a little emotional about this, 'cause I think, sometimes we forget how important that, that piece of life is, just the peacefulness that we're able to have with each other, and that was just a really nice forty minutes. That's all I have. Any, uh, future agenda items? Okay, thank you very much, do we have a motion for adjournment?
Remove. Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, extensions, hearing none, thank you board, meeting adjourned.